Good evening. Welcome to the Armstrong County Commissioner Candidate Debate at Armstrong Junior Senior High School. This debate is the third and final debate of the ASD Social Studies 2023 Debate Series. Tonight's debate is being streamed on Hot Topic Sports, the generous co-sponsorships of the Armstrong County Republican and Democratic Candidates. We appreciate their cooperation to support us, the students of Armstrong High School. My name is Evan Ford, and I am a senior at Armstrong High School and a student in MSU Clope's Advanced Placement and Making Government and Politics class. Tonight, I am joined by my evening classmates who will serve as moderators for tonight's debate. They are Shelby Club, Parker Wolf, and Kiefer Sgoski. Tonight's debate will feature the Candidates for Armstrong County Commissioner. There are a total of four candidates. Three candidates will be elected in the general election on November 7th. At this time, I will introduce the candidates in the order they will appear on the ballot. Mr. Pat Fabian. Mr. Fabian will appear on the ballot as a Democrat. He resides in Manor Township. Mr. Rich Farah. Mr. Farah will appear on the ballot as a Democrat. He resides in North Buffalo Township. Mr. Anthony Shea. Mr. Shea will appear on the ballot as a Republican. He resides in Elkhorn Township. And Mr. John Straight. Mr. Straight will appear on the ballot as a Republican. He resides in Wayne Township. To begin tonight's debate, my here, Parker Wolf, will present the rules of the debates.
Good evening. At this time, I am going to provide the rules for tonight's debate. These rules have been established by the student moderators and have been shared with the candidates via email prior to tonight's debate. First, each candidate will be given three minutes to make an opening statement. The candidates will be recognized in the order in which they appear on the ballot. Using a rotating ordering system, the student moderators will ask questions of the candidates. For example, Mr. Fabian will give his opening statement first, followed by Mr. Farah, Mr. Shea, and Mr. Straight. Then we will move to questions where the first question will be asked, Mr. Farah, followed by Mr. Shea, Mr. Straight, and then Mr. Fabian. Mr. Shea will receive the second question first, and so on. Each candidate will have the opportunity to answer each question. Two minutes will be allocated to each candidate prior to the debate. Two minutes will be allocated to each candidate to answer each question. After the candidate answers the question, the student moderators will have the opportunity to converge and deliberate on whether or not to ask the follow-up question. The candidate will have one minute to answer the follow-up question the moderators elect to ask them. Moderators will repeat the question for each candidate. Each follow-up question may be different based on student research. You will also have four questions in which one candidate will have one minute to answer the question, followed by a rebuttal from each of the other candidates. This question type will finish up with one-minute statement from each candidate who answered the question originally. Until the twelve questions have been prepared for the candidates, after all the rounds of questioning have concluded, each candidate will be allocated two-minute speaker closing statement, which will be given in reverse order. Student timekeepers will be sitting in the front row of the auditorium. When thirty seconds of the candidate's allotted time remains, the yellow card will be displayed. Once the allotted time has expired, a red card will be displayed. Every candidate is asked to respect the time frame except for the debate. Moderators will instruct candidates to stop speaking when their time expires. Candidates are asked to adhere strictly to time limits as they have been established. It is requested that audience members refrain from applause during the questioning portion of the debate, as it creates an environment too loud for the moderators and candidates onstage to hear. Applause will be permitted and encouraged at portions before and after the questioning portion. At this time, I will invite Shelby Club to the microphone to moderate the opening statements.
Good evening. We have arrived at the portion of the debate where each candidate will give their opening statement. Each candidate will be allotted three minutes. Mr. Fabian, you have three minutes.
Thank you, Shelby. Good evening, everyone. First, I would like to thank ASD, Mr. Club, Mrs. Clayton Smith, and the students of Armstrong High School for hosting the only Commissioner Candidate Debate of this election. For those of you who don't know me, I am a lifelong resident of Armstrong County. I reside in Manor Township with my wife Jill of nineteen years, my two children, Anderson fifteen and election thirteen. I've lived and worked in Armstrong County my entire life. I've spent nearly two terms as Armstrong County Commissioner. In my years of working in county government, I've taken on a great responsibility. Under my leadership, I spearheaded a fiscal turnaround for Armstrong County, and that experience matters. Prior to being elected County Commissioner in 2016, I gained knowledge and understanding of how local and county government operates. I worked as a mental health therapist for Family Counseling Center of Armstrong County. My five years in local government as a Manor Township Supervisor allowed me to be able to hit the ground running in my first day of office. As a full-time county commissioner, I've gained executive experience, combined with experience at the regional and state level. This gives me a unique perspective to make decisions and lead Armstrong County, and this experience mattered. My experience has shown that the best commissioners are those who foster a collaborative work environment. That includes everyone from county staff, elected officials, the business community, government agencies, citizens groups, nonprofits. And its ongoing collaboration positions me to better serve the residents of Armstrong County, and that experience mattered. In addition to be elected as county commissioner, I put in the extra effort to serve at the regional and state level. I've been elected to leadership roles in the County Commissioners Association, appointed through other committees, and served on numerous task forces that serve citizens statewide. I have demonstrated the tireless work ethic and earned the trust of other elected officials around the state, not only to lead but produce results, and that experience matters. I'm a graduate of Indiana University with a master's degree in community counseling from IUP, and I'm part of a small group of commissioners that have graduated from the Academy of Excellence in County Government and the Center for Excellence in County Leadership, and that experience matters. I mention all of this so you will keep in mind my experience as your county commissioner is being the unique and qualified perspective to make decisions that will position our county to capitalize on current and future developments, and you guessed it, that experience matters. I thank each and every one of you for coming out tonight, and I look forward to the opportunity to earn your vote on this stage tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Farah, you have three minutes.
Good evening, everybody. I'd like to start by thanking Armstrong School District, the Social Studies Department, the gifted honors and advanced placement students for giving us this opportunity to share our views. I would also like to thank all the residents of Armstrong County who came out. My name is Rich Farah, and I live in North Buffalo Township with my beautiful wife Darlene, who's sitting right in the middle. We have two children, a son and a daughter, and they have blessed us with three beautiful grandchildren. I am candidate for Armstrong County Commissioner, and after tonight, I'm sure you'll see why I'm the best choice for that position. Let's talk briefly about how we got here. There are at least a half dozen towns throughout Armstrong County that were specifically created to house workers through factories, Katania, Fort City Beach, Burbicallo, Carter, or just a few. When these companies like Elder, PPG R and P Coal, Nomac, and Bab Pelk and Willock left, the jobs were never replaced. When our coal mines started to decline more, we lost more jobs whenever they closed our power plants. Our best asset is also our best export. Our children are leaving because they can't find the jobs that they are looking for. People say, "Oh, there's all kinds of jobs," but not to the brightest of the bright in this area. Our smartest and brightest individuals, we send away. But enough about the past. What about the future? Let's talk about revitalization. We need to invest in rebuilding our downtown and to attract business and talent to our communities. When we revitalize our urban centers, it sparks growth in the rest of the county. We will get creative in the efforts to incubate small businesses, because it's not just about starting small companies, it's about keeping them growing. By doing this, laying the foundation of these for young adults, making it possible for them to stay here and work. And not only, excuse me, not only that, we will be creating opportunities to bring back the ones that left. Robin Green is one of these young talents. She chose to come back and to work here. She's given me many, many ideas on what we need to do in our communities. These are the type of individuals we need to speak with and get their visions and views. We need to support our nonprofit organizations such as the Klukens in Fort City and the Renaissance Community, the Ring Smell and Leechburg. These people put time and effort into their communities, and it shows by bringing people back in and giving us tourism. I promise you, if elected, I will be transparent. We will make education as a priority, not just that commissioners have nothing to do with education.
Mr. Farah, your time has expired. Thank you. Mr. Shea, you have three minutes.
Thank you, Shelby. First and foremost, I'd like to thank the students who've gathered together this event. I respected the smooth flow of times. I talked to one of the students the other day at the first debate. He said he was assigned to research my bio policy. I gave him a quiz. Surprisingly, he passed applying towers. So let me introduce myself and provide some background. And though I'm not from Armstrong County every day of my life, but I believe that is also a path I'm twelve. I am Anthony Shea. I currently live in Willock Township just outside of Leechburg. I'm an eighty-five graduate from Leechburg Area High School. Shortly after graduation, I enlisted in the Air Force. I served nine years as an MP, that's military policeman. In that capacity, I worked as a patrolman, a nine-one-one dispatcher, and a corrections guard. While a cop, I protected in night school and earned a bachelor's degree in computer science, which is very difficult to do as a cop. Most of the time I was going to college, I had to work a second job to help to bring the cost of the military tuition assistance program. With nine years enlisted time, I applied for and was accepted into Officer Candidate School. I was commissioned a second lieutenant as a communication officer in nineteen ninety-four. As an officer, I worked on meteorologists, space systems, oversaw internet and phone infrastructure for Europe and Africa. I was an assistant professor at MIGMA with my final assignment as the commander of the Recruiting and Support Squadron of Forest State Area. Anyone here interested in joining the Air Force, I'll hook you up. In two thousand eight, I retired at the rank of major. I served in combat operations in Kosovo and supported Iraqi, the Iraqi No-Plaza. I also earned a master's degree in public communications along the way. Upon retirement in two thousand eight, I have worked primarily in business banking, building out secure IT infrastructure, much dissimilar from what I did in the military. I also spent four years in healthcare. My claim to fame there was designing a visible light product and getting FDA approval and bringing it to production at Mercy Hospital, as well as assisting in cancer research at Home and Cancer Center. In my free time, I've served on the Leechburg School Board with the last five years in a leadership role. I've also served at NAPD as the Joint Operations Committee Chairman. In these roles, as well in the military and business, I've overseen multimillion-dollar budgets, double labor unions, and a multitude of contractual and HR issues. Now that I've given you a little bit of background about me, let me tell you about why I'm running for Armstrong County Commissioner. I do not believe our county has had its fullest potential. You go east towards Indiana, you go west towards Butler, and there's a lot more prosperity. That said, I have the background, education, energy, and most importantly, vision that can drive this county to its fullest potential. I'll explain more during our debate tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Straight, you have three minutes.
Good evening, everyone. First of all, I also want to thank Mr. Club and the students for all the work they've done to have these debates. I think this is a tremendous way of getting folks to know about the school board, which were the previous debates, and tonight the commissioners. I will introduce myself again. I'm John Straight. My background includes over forty years of self-employment as a businessperson. I started out working on my baby dairy farm, which certainly taught me a hard work ethic and seven-day-a-week work for very low pay. You don't work, you don't get paid, period. I realized I had to grow the farm to a much larger herd of cows, so I chose to move on to other things. From there, I started Genesis Reeds, which is an emotional and advertising business, which I ran for twenty-six years. I sold that business during COVID, but it still operates under the same name and district PA. From COVID until now, I have started Straightforward Catering, which is a takeout dinner and catering establishment. I plan to continue this business when elected as Commissioner, as time permit. I'm running for this office because I feel at this point in my life, I would bring an experience that could help benefit Armstrong County. My values are this: complete transparency and honesty. I plan to hold the line on spending while also trying to take care of the employees of the county. My compassion lies mostly with the first responders, the police, sheriff's department, jail workers, volunteer firemen, and all of those who give time in these areas. These are very tough jobs, and I can speak more on that later, if permitted. Community. Being self-employed my entire life, I understand how taxes can be life. More years than not, I struggle to pay my taxes while continuing to run my business. During those struggles, the money goes for the taxes. You have very little left for your families. This county is filled with mom-and-pop businesses. I personally know their struggles. These are the businesses that support the students, activities, and charities. These are the people we go to for donations, and these are some of the people we also need to help take care of in the county. I feel as commissioners, we need to work alongside one another to bring jobs, increase the population of the county, work to improve broadband service, continue to develop tourism, continue to search for funding through grant grants, come alongside the municipalities to help them find funding. I will work alongside all of these to deal with the struggles of living in a rural county. First and foremost, I need your support. I need to get out of the vote in the number seven for the change in this region of Armstrong County.
Thank you. We will now proceed to the first question of tonight's debate.
Mr. Farah, if elected to office, how do you plan on improving the overall quality of life for the citizens of Armstrong County? You have two minutes.
When you speak about improving, we have to look at where we're at today. That's where my plan of revitalizing downtown and to bring new business to the downtown area. The days of mills and factories are gone. We need to be smarter. That's why we need to help start small businesses and keep them growing. I have a plan to have incubators to start these businesses and have schooling to help educate these schools or these businesses to keep them growing.
Mr. Shea, if elected to office, how do you plan on improving the overall quality of life for the citizens of Armstrong County? You have two minutes.
Yes, thank you. I have basically a three-part layer plan. A, we've got to deal with safety of the community. I'll probably go into that more later. We've got to deal with the drug issue in the county, because nobody's going to want to move here, live here, or go outside, and all of those issues. We need to expand out the infrastructure, so that way we create environments within all the communities and out into the hinterlands of Armstrong County, so they can set up shop, work from home, do schoolwork, and ultimately in the workforce development, where we see the right works sets to the specific employers in the county.
It appears we are having some trouble with the mic, so we will take a short break to try to resolve. Thank you. Do you have a question? Mr. Straight, if elected to office, how do you plan on improving the overall quality of life for citizens in Armstrong County? You have two minutes.
When I've traveled around the county most of the summer, but I've realized that there's a lot of things that are just right at hand to start up. I believe tourism is one of the biggest things that we can develop through the trail system and everything that's involved with that. By improving the trail system workings, we can bring smaller companies in, and we can actually become more of a tourist attraction, where we could have small shops. There's some buildings that have been tour dining in Katania, and I believe some of the ideas for that is to do things that will bring tourism in. With the trail system and the amount of folks that come through here, we also need to have more places for folks to stay, more places to eat. When we do that, that brings more folks in. When you bring more folks in, that helps keep a line on taxes and provides stronger folks.
As a follow-up, could you explain for the benefit of the county what the trail system is? You have one minute to respond.
The trail system is the rails to trails that comes through Katania. According to the Great Alloping Passage, the rail to trail system runs from Pittsburgh to Cumberland, Maryland. The economic impact, there's a hundred and twenty-one million dollars of impact per year in four old coal towns that have rebranded into trail and river towns. Usage for the same time period is one million users, of which two hundred thousand are multi-day travelers. Armstrong County is prime to see the same type of impacts. There's over two hundred miles of trails in Armstrong County. Armstrong Trails is on the same line of the Erie to Pittsburgh Trail. It's two hundred and seventy miles, and there's several trails that range off of that. We sit right in the center where we could draw folks into here to come that up.
Thank you. Mr. Fabian, if you are re-elected to office, how do you plan on improving the overall quality of life for the citizens of Armstrong County? You have two minutes.
That's a heavy question to answer in about two minutes, but I'll do my best. One thing I noticed before getting elected into office in two thousand sixteen, when you look at the surrounding counties, we didn't have an Anger University. One thing, we worked with the Lake Jeff Powell, Senator Joe Pittman, and DC Three to bring a community college to Armstrong County. I would agree with Anthony Shea, the drug issue. One thing I'm most proud of in the county is I sit on the board for the Armstrong Indiana Clinic Drug and Alcohol Commission. That commission is DED experts across the Commonwealth. And the resources and programming that we've deployed in the last eight years in the community, we are considered the experts, and we can go into those more later. Infrastructure, I'm probably most proud of this in my eight-year, we've connected over five hundred people to water and sewage. We have seven thousand people connected to broadband and plans to get every single home in the county broadband and infrastructure. Transportation, I served one of the southwestern transportation boards as the vice chairman. I have averaged, since I've been the vice chairman, bringing back seventy-five million dollars in transportation funding directed to Armstrong County. The trail system, since in the last eight years, we put over thirty million dollars into our trail system, doing our part to complete the Erie to Pittsburgh Trail. And then blighted property, working with the Industrial Development Council and Authority. We've been on a mission to take down blighted properties, and Mr. Straight had noticed most recently, we've got a donated property across from Scramples, and we'll turn that into something vibrant. We've also purchased the Apollo Ridge High School, and we're going to be taking that down in the near future and doing something vibrant there as well.
Thank you.
Mr. Shea, what desirable qualities do you possess that other candidates do not? You have two minutes to respond.
Thank you. First and foremost on that one is I have a worldview that probably other candidates don't have. My time in the military, I've been away for twenty-plus years, I've been around all fifty states in this country, thirty-five countries, and I have different common sense. I've seen how different governments work, governments work from around the world. This has given me a lot of insight that a lot of folks wouldn't have unless they've traveled as much as I have. Also, I have a lot of drive and energy. Anybody knows me, I'm the Energizer Buddy. I go and go and go. My work ethic is beyond probably anyone's you've ever met.
Thank you. And Mr. Shea, as a follow-up, what positive qualities do you feel that your running mates possess? You have one minute to respond.
Okay. John, I like him very much. He is a great honest man, and I really like that. Same thing with Rich. He's a very honest man and cares, and that's a lot of drive. So I like all the candidates. I like all any of them.
Thank you. And Mr. Straight, what desirable qualities do you possess that other candidates do not? You have two minutes.
I have never been any part of political drive whatsoever. I sit here solely on a work ethic of self-employment in my whole life. All the businesses that I mentioned openly at the beginning, I started from nothing, so I know what it's like to do that. I know what it's like to work hard to develop things. I think a county being in a position where we can continue to grow, I will have some of that work ethic to bring alongside to help make the changes needed to do that. It's a loaded question. I'm not good at talking about myself.
Thank you. And Mr. Fabian, what desirable qualities do you possess that other candidates do not? You have two minutes.
You're right. That's a lovely question, right? Because I don't want to talk bad about any of the candidates onstage. I have the utmost respect for them throwing their hats into the ring from the county commissioner position. It's a difficult job. But I think when you look at qualities, common sense, prudent judgment, a good decision-maker, in just my experience in working in local and county government, and I've always kept my promises. And the promises that I hold close to my heart is to always be fair to the county employees and do my best to keep the tax burden off our property owners.
Thank you. And Mr. Farah, what desirable qualities do you possess that other candidates do not? You have two minutes to respond.
Thank you. I've spent my life in business. I've ran businesses. I've been directors, a manager. I've worked through from the bottom as a truck driver, the whole way up to running the company. And they've been multimillion-dollar companies. I know how to make things work. I'm a great organizer. I'm a good speaker, and I am a motivator. Business, I look at, government is a business. You have to direct, you have to manage, and you have to culture your workforce to grow. So being in business, I think that gives me the knowledge of what we need to So being in business, I think that gives me the knowledge of what we need to take this county forward.
Thank you.
Mr. Straight, as Armstrong County is on its seventh consecutive year with no tax increase, and with ever-increasing wages and health insurance costs for county employees, what are your plans going forward regarding tax policy? You have two minutes to respond.
Tax policies are something that we all want to keep our handle on. I admire the fact that they've raised no taxes in the past seven years. But as you stated in your question, costs are going up regularly. We all pay more for grocery store, we all pay more for gas. My thoughts are, we try to come up with grants, and try to come up with ways to try to trim the budget down, that we can hold a line on taxes, because I care about the folks, I care about the folks, the couple that live in Ford City. I care about the small businesses. So I'm not in favor of raising taxes at all, but we all know that there's a reality that could happen at some point.
Mr. Fabian, as Armstrong County is on its seventh consecutive year with no tax increase, and with ever-increasing wages and health insurance costs for county employees, what are your plans going forward regarding tax policy? You have two minutes.
You know, for me, if I was the governor for a day, I would eliminate property taxes. I'm a big supporter of that. Currently, there's no legislation out there as such. So we have to play by the play, hoping we're handled. You know, in seven years, you're correct, we haven't made the property tax, and I foresee that to be another eighth year. I've been an elected official for 13 years, and although it's been challenging year over year, we've always found ways not to raise taxes without eliminating services or resources in the community. I think the one thing, of a big advocate we've done over the last two years, is to have a very aggressive approach in building our industrial parks. 12 months, or 24 months ago, we entered a partnership with R.I.B.C., who has the biggest land portfolio in southwestern Pennsylvania. In 2024, that partnership, you're going to see a $60 million investment in North Point, or excuse me, Armstrong Innovation Park. 90 new homes, we have $12 million in 30,000 square foot flex space buildings. We have Amazon coming into the park, we sold additional parcels to data centers. We've also worked with Ford City Borough collaboratively to sell the brownfields to 30 acres. So just having an aggressive approach, working with our southwest regional partners, we've got an action team to grow our tax base, so we don't have to go after the property taxes.
As a follow-up, why do you believe that North Point was the right place to develop? You have one minute to respond.
Well, the Armstrong Innovation Park, which is what we rebranded it, the county, under the Industrial Development Council, the Industrial Development Authority, those are the five parks that we actually own, and that's where we look at our investments to grow the facility. That's not to say, when you look at borough municipalities, that we're not permanently working them to develop those municipalities and boroughs as well.
Thank you. Mr. Farah, as Armstrong County is on its seventh consecutive year with no tax increase, and with ever-increasing wages and health insurance costs for county employees, what are your plans going forward regarding tax policy? You have two minutes to respond.
Well, I don't think you have to be an apothecian to figure out that this is Mr. Fabian's eighth year. So without that tax, they've been very creative, and he's been very creative then. In order for us not to be able to raise taxes, we have to find revenue elsewhere. And by doing that, we have to find different businesses to come in, different ways to generate revenue. Again, we'll have to get creative, we'll have to look at everything that we're doing now and decide if we're doing it right. When you bring businesses in from outside, it's great, and hopefully that'll increase your tax base. But when you bring companies in and you offer them no taxes for years, and then after that ends, they leave, you really haven't gained anything. Over the last couple of years, we've lost Mellon, they also lost IUP, who was an anchor college that we had, and they decided to pull out of Armstrong County. So we just have to be smart, and if we don't want to raise taxes, we have to find other avenues which will be able to take care of those costs that we're going to see.
Thank you. Mr. Shea, as Armstrong County is on its seventh consecutive year with no tax increase, and with ever-increasing wages and health insurance costs for county employees, what are your plans going forward regarding tax policy? You have two minutes.
Well, first of all, I have experience already at the school district level. They managed in the last five years about a tax increase. And that's taken a lot of work, that's looking at everything, looking at the healthcare plans, possibly going from a PPO to a high-end medical plan, looking for efficiencies. You can't get anywhere unless you get new business with a new building, that's the price of more money coming in. So let's face it, we've got to get new growth into the county. We've got to use all the tools in the toolbox, like the dart is. We need to also, you know, use the land banks to re-group properties that are basically not used anymore and get them back on the tax show. There's many different things, it's sort of a layering again, about getting all these pieces together. At the end of the day, though, I'm never for my labor or paying any taxes. We can't, the folks here can't afford that, we can't go there. And we'll find creative solutions. We've done it the last five years on our school board, we'll find ways to go forward with the county.
Thank you. For this upcoming question, the frame will be a bit different. As Mr. Fabian is the only incoming candidate, I will pose the question to him. You will have two minutes to respond. After his response, each of the other candidates will be given one minute to offer their reply. After the three candidates give their reply, Mr. Fabian will also be given one minute to offer a final comment on the discussion related to the initial question. Mr. Fabian, on the Armstrong County Commissioner's Facebook page, we have found that 35% of posts responded post regarding job opportunities and community events. 21% involved pictures of visits to various restaurants. 44% involved pictures, involved pictures of various visits to various businesses. Do you feel that this is an efficient use of the page? You have two minutes to respond.
Probably not. I don't have access to that page, I don't feel anything with it. It's the only political, social media account I have, is my track Fabian Armstrong County Commissioner page. But as far as visiting visits over the course of the last year and a half, that's something that community and economic development has encouraged all counties to do. Every business visit that we visit, the county gets $400 in return for doing, conducting a survey on those. We use those dollars to reinvest them in small businesses.
Mr. Farah, hearing what Mr. Fabian has just stated, how do you respond? You have one minute.
Everybody wants to know what you're doing when you're at the mission. That shows where they've been and what they've seen. Now, my face isn't one for pictures, so it's better for radio. I probably wouldn't post my pictures everywhere. I would be more looking at the businesses themselves. I would visit those businesses, and I would highlight them. There's no reason for me to be front and center. I believe the business is what we want to show.
Thank you. Mr. Shea, given Mr. Fabian's response, how would you like to respond? You have one minute.
My thoughts on this, first, the business visits are important business. The mission should probably not be in the pictures. We should find out what roadblocks are in the way of these businesses helping grow, and possible, not so much from the pictures. If you do the right thing, people will know.
Thank you. Mr. Straight, given Mr. Fabian's response, how would you respond? You have one minute.
I have no problems with wanting to visit businesses, but I almost want to go alongside what Anthony said, that's talk about the business struggles that they have, and that's air those out, and that's keeping them transparent on how these businesses are operating in Armstrong County. Then how can we, as a county, go alongside them, help them through the struggles that they go with? Promoting small businesses is a great thing, I don't disregard that at all. But then let's see how we can come alongside and actually help them.
Mr. Fabian, given how the other candidates have responded, how would you like to respond? You have one minute.
No, I appreciate and respect your feedback, I would agree with some of the points. What you don't see a lot of times, when we visit these businesses, almost 100 over the last year and a half, is that we spend a lot of time there. We ask about their work conditions as far as how the business is doing. We ask about employee situations, healthcare, their struggles, and a plethora of other questions. And we get back to D.C.E.D., and then we turn again, we get a check back to those businesses. So we know what they're going through, we know some of their struggles, and we know what we need to do as far as workforce development. The other thing is, as far as the pictures, you know, these businesses that we visit are welcoming. They like it there in the living times, they like it there on social media. It does help drive more business to their existing business. So when you put a picture of them or the outside of their storefront, that's good to the businesses that are here in Armstrong County.
Thank you. Mr. Farah, what are your future plans regarding bringing employment into Armstrong County? What policy changes or investments are necessary for broader employment? You have two minutes.
When you look at what structure and what businesses we have here now, you need to look at what types of businesses we need. What kind of businesses will work with other businesses that we already have? And then we need to find the investors. We need to go out and find the investors who want to invest in Armstrong County and the employees that we have here, knowing that we have a great workforce. R.I.B.C. Park is starting to work now that we are not doing it ourselves. I'm not sure if we should have ever been doing it ourselves, we're not real estate agents. If we have a partnership with R.I.B.C. Park, then we really need the I.B.C. to own it, since there you're going with the I.B.C. to do.
Thank you. Mr. Shea, what are your future plans concerning bringing employment into Armstrong County? What policy changes or investments are necessary for broader employment? You have two minutes.
Yes, first, I'd like to get broadband expanded out to the entire county. And the next thing I want to do is get work-from-home folks to come here. I work from home, there's a lot of folks, it doesn't matter if you live by a city anymore, you can live anywhere. So why not market Armstrong County as this great place to be, and bring all those people with good salaries into the county? With that, we start letting the other residents come, is you bring all these high-income folks into the county. That would be the start of it. I'd also like to encourage veterans to come back. And as we, Richard mentioned, bringing some of the folks that left can come back, let's bring their talent back. As far as workforce development, we have a jam right now, straightening out the road at Lenny Technical School, which I'm determined of. We turn out all kinds of folks with great jobs. It's a big business owner, they get out there at college for four years, get a debt at your eyeballs to get a job. We have folks right now that are going to hire prospective employers right now. One of the things they're up and working on is a diesel replacement program, expanding out the Lenny, by getting the commercial job out of people from there. Also, we can expand out the C.D.L. program even further. Those are jobs that we can get right now. The Don Education Program up schools people right now, get up into the workforce and start earning more money. More money buyers have the positive feedback, or positive feedback should provide more businesses to grow in the county.
As a follow-up question, can you elaborate on the C.D.L. program? You have one minute to respond.
Basically, it's allowing folks to get a truck driver license. Right now, that is a job that pays very well. We need bus drivers, we need tri-axle-type drivers, also, of course, the big rigs. All those jobs are local, we can get folks into those seats and work in right away.
Thank you. Mr. Straight, what are your future plans concerning bringing employment into Armstrong County? What policy changes or investments are necessary for broader employment? You have two minutes to respond.
So the fact that I come from self-employment, I have a lot of friends that are in self-employed businesses as well. Touching back on Lenny, Lenny is up 13% over the past few years, and it seems to be that there's a trend towards the trades. The trades involve HVAC, plumbing, all the things to deal with, construction, construction in general. They are all looking for workers right now. So as we trend towards trades, I feel that that's going to be a big plus with having Lenny and B.C. Three there as well. Back to the trail systems that I spoke about earlier, the recreation part of it. We need outfitters, we need hotels, we need to bring in restaurants, and these are all things that will serve to employ folks.
Thank you. Mr. Fabian, what are your future plans concerning bringing employment into Armstrong County? What policy changes or investments are necessary for broader employment? You have two minutes.
I'm going to talk about one particular investment. So I'm the vice chairman of the Southwest Pennsylvania Commission. I'm heavily involved with broadband expansion in southwestern Pennsylvania and also Armstrong County. Back in June, I participated in the broadband digital equity roundtable. 1.1 billion, with a B, the Commonwealth of PA got to subsidize 300,000 unserved and underserved locations in the state. Working with our partners here, even the Armstrong School District, Pitt and Information Technology Center, Southwest Pennsylvania. The county right now has 5,300 homes that aren't connected or underserved. The cost of that, just the cost of that, we figured here about $34 million. Currently, we're working with those providers in Armstrong County that have a footprint. And just recently, as of a month ago, we submitted two applications for the Pennsylvania Broadband Infrastructure Program. Totally qualified and qualified, all right? That means next year, when this billion dollars comes available, we will be competitive prank process in Pennsylvania. We will be actively seeking $22 million, which means 100% of Armstrong County once that's completed by 2028 with that secured funding, every single household in Armstrong County will be served broadband connectivity.
Thank you.
Mr. Shea, how will you support local clubs and organizations? Can you give your reasoning as to why they are important to you? You have two minutes to respond.
Yes, that's an easy one. I'm a member of the Elks, News, BFW, American Legion, I serve on this, and they serve a very important purpose. With the Eastburg Elks that I belong to, just today, I was out doing traffic awareness prevention in the schools. We go out and we talk to kids, we talk about awareness, but there's so many other different areas, it would cause us. And that's pretty work of the county for getting, you know, the funding, the microfunding, the Marcellus Grant-type funds into those different organizations, and encourage them, I mean, any place, maybe where you can.
Thank you. And Mr. Straight, how will you support local clubs and organizations? Can you give your reasoning as to why they are important to you? You have two minutes.
I've served as vice president of Dayton Fair for 14 years now. So I know what it's like to bring events into the area to help promote agriculture, which is a huge part of agriculture in our county. So through working with the Dayton Fair, I already have relationships built with a lot of the vendors, a lot of the folks that we pull shows with, and I just feel this is a great thing to come to the young town part of our county to help with that. I'm also involved heavily with...
I'm also involved heavily with my church, where we also provide classes on folks that have lost loved ones. We have a pre-share class that I lead. So these are things that I feel are important to come alongside of and help the folks who live inside of our county.
Thank you. Mr. Fabian, how will you support local clubs and organizations? Can you give your reasoning as to why they are important to you? You have two minutes.
Probably one of the best parts of the county commissioner job is using Act 13 funding, which is impact fees that we receive on a yearly basis and handing, I don't want to say handing out, but reviewing applications and requests for that funding. Over the years, we've supported programs with 4H, the Dayton Fair, Camp Cadet, Touting Class Group, we've called invitation of Armstrong Horse Park, Arts on the Avenue, the Armstrong County River Development Corporation. It goes on and on and on. So that's basically about $100,000 a year that we put back out into nonprofits and beauty organizations to help them with their missions.
Thank you. And Mr. Farah, how will you support local clubs and organizations? Can you give your reasoning as to why they are important to you? You have two minutes to respond.
As I mentioned in my opening statement, I believe that our nonprofit organizations are the core of our county. We have these organizations that put on fairs, such as the Dayton Fair. You have the Klukens again in Fort City with the Renaissance. You have the Katanning Festival. These all bring people into Armstrong County. And when they bring people in, hopefully, people want to stay. One of the things that on Pat's thing with $100,000, I would like to make it more that we match people. We don't just give them the money, but we would match their money. So if they came up with $50,000, we would match that $50,000. That way, they are also out trying to better themselves. And we're not just giving them money, they're actually doing things for that money. So now we have $200,000 going into these organizations.
Thank you. And Mr. Farah.
Can I respond to that?
Go for it, you have one minute.
So I agree with Rich. That's not the kind of, that's not the kind of money we're talking about with Act 13 money. But I do agree with you. We utilize CARES Act funding or ARCA funding. That's exactly the kind of folks we get. Municipality puts a third, we put in a third, and we use a grant to put in a third. That's how you stretch that money out and he's right on, he's getting that right on the network. That's not the kind of money we're talking about in Act 13.
Thank you. And Mr. Farah, as a follow-up, what specific local organizations have you taken part in? You have one minute.
Of course, I've talked about the Klukens, and I'd like to volunteer with that one. I volunteer for children ones that need to help. Been down at the Katanning Fair working in their booth. I think it's important that we give back to our communities. There's not enough help anymore. So anytime you can volunteer, it helps them. So I encourage everybody to pick that and go out and volunteer for these organizations.
Thank you.
Mr. Straight, what do you plan to do to support small businesses in Armstrong County? If so, what and when will this happen? You have two minutes to respond.
Supporting small businesses, promoting them, and letting that all approach to them. I don't exactly have a plan we have on how to do that. But I would first want to meet with them, and we're going to use their concerns, and then work alongside with them. As for bringing new small business in, if that is part of the question, I'm going to go back to the tourism. I don't mean that pretty hard because I see that as being a big part of the one here. And the small business, we can give them some incentives to bring them in, to get them into the county. We have so many folks that just want to leave the county and move on because the county is just stagnant. There's a curve all around us, and we don't see that curve right here like we do in the other towns. So I will do it on my hand and try to bring folks in for that.
Thank you. Mr. Fabian, what do you plan to do to support small businesses in Armstrong County? If so, what and when will this happen? You have two minutes to respond.
I take a little offense to that, that we're stagnant. I've worked over the last eight years to put out, well, first of all, my first four years of county government, I sat back. I sat at industrial development council meetings and authority meetings. I watched, I listened, and it was apparent to me that the leadership we had, the board members we had, nothing was going on in the past 20 years. We took an aggressive approach to change the board, to change the director. And over the last 24 months, we've seen more progress. In that 24 months, more investments, more industrial parks than we've seen in the last 20 years, and I'm proud of that fact. What can we do to continue to support businesses? Currently, I'm the chairman of the Workforce Development Board. We're always talking to our schools. We're always talking to our employers, particularly manufacturing, and seeing how we best can support their efforts and their needs. And right now, it's, you know, our employers need employees. And how do we match those students graduating? Or those employees that are in our community? How do we get them connected? And that's what we've been working on, to the Workforce Development Organization.
Mr. Farah, what do you plan to do to support small businesses in Armstrong County? If so, what and when will this happen? You have two minutes to respond.
I had said before that education is a priority because strong education system creates a strong talent base. And that's what investors are looking for. So to create small business, we would like to have some developing centers and have some, where we have classes to teach businesses how to operate better. Classes on how to purchase and how to sell better. And if I'm elected, we would like to try to get this started as soon as possible so that we can start these businesses growing.
Mr. Farah, as a follow-up question, you have announced three times about incubators. Can you please elaborate on the context and what that means to you?
What it means to me is we have a system set up where we teach small businesses how to develop. We bring them in, we educate them, we work with them. We have other businesses come into the area and help educate them. We get them started on their own, we put them into an area. Once they start to develop, once they start to grow, now they can move on to their own, and they can lease their own property. And then we start with another company. So we're continually growing these small businesses and keeping them growing.
Thank you. Mr. Shea, what do you plan to do to support small businesses in Armstrong County? If so, what and when will this happen? You have two minutes to respond.
Well, first of all, it's going to happen ASAP. And the thing we do as a county commissioner is find out, what are the roadblocks in place of our existing businesses? How do we retain them? What are the zoning, what are the different policies? What can we do to remove those hindrances so they can do business? Part one, we start building out the infrastructure, as I mentioned. Part two, how do we build that out so we can get more businesses in? The thing is, we can't wait around too long. We need to just figure out what we can do right now, what shovel-ready to get solved. And that's probably through policy and such, removing roadblocks. Use tools such as Lourdes, basically, to helping grow businesses where they can. We don't have a lot of the roadblocks, so the other people we have. And just a follow-up question, with Lourdes, there's a tax abatement program. Where you actually give an abatement off of a property that you expand out or build a new one or put in addition to. So let's find ways to use the tools in our toolbox and then work with our state and federal officials to change policies at that level, to remove even further roadblocks that we don't have control over, kind of.
Thank you. This next question will be structured similarly to our question for us. Mr. Fabian, on August 3rd, 2020, you, Don Myers, and Jason Renshaw posted on Facebook announcing that $2 million for half granted to Armstrong County to be given to small businesses and nonprofit organizations. Would you please state how this grant was allocated? You have two minutes to respond.
Yeah, you're talking about CARES Act funding. We made those announcements more than one time. $2 million to support small businesses during the COVID pandemic. Initially, when those applications came back to our Economic Development Department, we were receiving about $1.3 million, just over 150 applications. So we re-advertised, and we got to about 200 businesses that applied. That was a stringent process. We hired a consultant, it's called Stephen Ackerrod, to assist us with that process. We had to hire a legal team to review those applications. And then at the end of the process, that 1.7 million dollars is what actually went out the door. We didn't even spend the three, there was $300,000 that we were unable to spend. And that went through the audit. And I was happy that we were able to help with 200 Armstrong County businesses with the grant funding. And the letters sent back to act indicated that they were very good personally and supportive of that.
As a follow-up, could you please state in a more specific way where the money went? Specific names of businesses or nonprofits that you want to respond to?
That list is 200 businesses, and I don't have that list with me. If you're trying to ask me if a business that I previously owned receives a grant through that program, I would tell you in full transparency, myself and two of my business partners were applicants for that. We were the last ones in line to receive that application or submit that application with $300,000. I opened the business from a ground value property business in 2018. The COVID pandemic hit, that couldn't have been a worse downturn. Over 500 kids come into the business that I announced. It was a sports complex. I eventually sold it in May of 2022 to somebody else. I had to lock it in for the next year.
Mr. Farah, given Mr. Fabian's prior statement, I just like to respond with one last question.
I can't speak to how it was done. It wasn't fair. I wish it would have been done better. I wish we would have run it out to more businesses. I've heard there were so many that did not even hear about it. And Kent Ring, Pat, as they said, they put it there. The company that they got unfortunately did give it out to the companies. And if we had that money left, we should have went back out and found the companies that needed it. As far as what's legal and what isn't legal, some can be legal, but it can be morally a lot right. So I think when you're handing out money, it just doesn't look good if you take it. But again, it wasn't just him, it was two partners that he had also. So you can't chastise him on that. And he wouldn't have been the only one, so.
So, you know, I hear what you're saying, and I agree with you, I appreciate your words. But, you know, the problem with that program, whether you put it out on Facebook, you throw it out in the database, and you have a lot of small businesses, you put it on the front page, and you're leaving times.
Mr. Fabian.
Exhausted every avenue during that time to get out $2 million.
Respond without asking first. Mr. Straight, I mean, Mr. Shea, Mr. Fabian's response, how would you like to respond? You have one minute.
I think it's a process, it's hard to judge completely. I do know that families of Armstrong are in a totally different ecosystem, so a lot of folks did not hear about it, rightly or wrongly. And there was complaints from a council supervisor, possibly money did go in that direction. I think mostly it would be just transparency on how the process works and seeing how you can improve in the future. It's something I'd like to come up again. Again, I was pretty impressed with the part of the process.
Thank you. Mr. Straight, given Mr. Fabian's response, how would you like to respond? You have one minute.
I was not one of the businesses to receive any COVID money. I actually lost my business during COVID. I was shut off for a period of time. But I'm certainly not going to put that on the commissioners. I don't know how you would get the word out to everybody in a timely manner to be able to do that. I was not here to see how they handled it either. I just know that it didn't get out to the areas I was in. That's all I can say.
Mr. Farah, Mr. Fabian, you may now respond to their lines. You have one minute.
I think one of the biggest challenges and barriers, at least from the city, at least from the seat that I sit in, is communicated. Whether it's social media, you have one newspaper in town at the leader time, and the Valley newspaper in the southern end of the county. We have a database of businesses that involve our economic development. We've kicked out this grant information to all and every single municipality, boroughs and township. We did the best job we could to get this information out to as many people as we could. And that's all we could, I don't know what more we could have.
Thank you.
Mr. Farah, what are your views on the county's high level of public debt? You have two minutes to respond.
As far as public debt, if you look at what Mr. Fabian said earlier, we're going pretty good, so I'm not sure where the debt comes from. I can't speak to it without looking at the books and determining if it's true debt or if it's inflated from other times past. So I will look into it, but I can't give you a fair answer on it at this time.
Thank you. And Mr. Farah, as a follow-up, what are your previous experiences with authorizing budgets? You have one minute to respond.
I have worked with businesses, I have ran businesses. I had ran Arch Care at the hospital, which was a durable medical equipment company where I was involved with running all aspects of the company. I had to do the budget, I had to hire and manage the human resources. And where I work now at University of Pittsburgh Medical Center, I'm involved in the budget process for our department. So I'm very comfortable on the budget process.
Thank you. And Mr. Shea, what are your views on the county's current level of public debt? You have two minutes to respond.
To be honest, I need to do more research. I know from our school district, we all face a degree debt, one or another, bond issues and such. You have to manage it. There's been projects that come along that you can't take out one tax year. So there is a debt sometimes you have to acquire. You've also got to be careful, like right now, the economy's going in the wrong direction. Bank loans, mortgage loans are a 30-year high of over 8%. So if you keep yourself in a situation where you have pretty much debt and you need more money, that can jam. So it's always best to keep your debt managed and low.
Thank you. And Mr. Shea, as a follow-up, how do you plan to manage this debt?
As far as local county, basically, there's probably some kind of spending in the budget that manages it. If you can find a competitive rate that goes over what you have, it's always sometimes good to rather go with a rate, I mean, the rate. We have to expand it or extend out the debt, not a far one, but sometimes that we do that to make sure you balance your income, income and output.
Thank you. And Mr. Straight, what are your views on the county's current level of public debt? You have two minutes.
I'm actually only a colleague about the budget that I brought with me tonight. But unfortunately, because I'm not elected and sitting in that seat, I really can't see how it's allocated and where everything goes. I just have a very basic view of that. And we're always going to have debt. It's just can you manage it properly, what you have coming in? And if I could just go into my follow-up on how I would do that. I sit on the executive board of elders at Arches Church. So we are constantly working on budgets there alongside of the Dayton Fair. So we are constantly working on budgets there alongside of the day fair, working on budgets there. And those are pretty good buckets of costs and expenses and rewards to bring also to finding grants to jolly out the balance and keep our debt load towards the minimum.
Thank you. And Mr. Fabian, what are your views on the county's current level of public debt? You have two minutes to respond.
Well, I think you got to make good decisions. You know, before I took office in 2016, the previous board of commissioners increased taxes twice in a four-year period. I left myself as the new county commissioner and the commissioners I was working with at the time, a $600,000 operating unit. On any given day, like for January, I could avoid it, I could go to a new group somewhere. It's not a lot of dollars in your operating reserve. You know, spearheaded, as I mentioned in the opening, a fiscal turnaround. As of today, you have roughly close to $8 million in your operating reserve. It's a 1300% increase. Also, you know, capital to pension fund that was struggling. We got very aggressive with that, which I can change money manager, it ballooned from $60 million to $85 million. That was a 39% increase in the pension fund. Armstrong County, as of today, has an A-plus rate, credit rate. That's the highest rate you can get for any sixth-class county. And we decreased debt over 20%, alright? You ask why we got so far in debt? Our long-term obligations were $72 million when I took office in 2016. As of last year, we reduced that debt by 20% to $14.4 billion. But your two biggest drivers to that were the New One 911 Center and the New Armstrong County Jail, which I have a lot to do with either one of those. Personally, I would build a jail on the borders with Indiania and Clary, Westmoreland, or maybe even Allegheny County to decrease our cost. And I would kept the 911's point center in the annex building and it would have been grandfathered and have been about a portion of the cost.
Thank you. Mr. Fabian, as a follow-up, do you plan to move forward with your plans that you've just mentioned if you're re-elected?
To keep reducing debt? Absolutely. But as I think Mr. Straight said, you're never going to be out of debt. I just don't know where we went. We've bought almost $59 million. Even though we've done a good job over 18 years or eight years reducing it by 20%, you'll be keeping it year over year.
Thank you. Mr. Shea, what do you believe is the single most pressing issue in Armstrong County? And if elected, how do you plan to rectify this issue? You have two minutes to respond.
The pressing issue for me, the one I'm going to hit day one, is the situation at the jail. I've talked to corrections officers there, I've talked to a lot of folks. Right now, there are 25 employees and they should have about 40 full-time employees. We have correction officers who are working multiple doubles. That means they're going in and working 16 hours, trying to drive home in eight hours, and do this again multiple days in a row. I used to be a corrections guard in another life when I was in the military. And I know that is a hard job. The prisoners have 24 hours, they think of some way to get one over on you. And when you're working 16 hours at a time, multiple days in a row, your guard comes down. I see that as a big accident, safety issue, just waiting to blow up at any time. You saw what happened on the other side of the state with a prisoner escaping. So that's the first thing I want to deal with when I get in office. I will form a task force, whatever it takes, to come up with a solution.
And Mr. Straight, what do you believe is the single most pressing issue in Armstrong County? And if elected, how do you plan to rectify this issue? You have two minutes to respond.
I also agree that the jail is one of the places we have issues with. I understand we're a sixth-class county and we pay according to that rating. But I also know that we're bordered by Allegheny, which is a second-class county, Westmoreland is a third-class county, about our fourth-class county. So that brings 2 million people within 50 miles of the county area. So a lot of times the folks that come into our area, that's why they want to be in trouble. So I don't exactly know how to rectify it, but I do know we need to somehow not lose these employees when we get here. Whether we obviously have to adjust pay somehow. I don't know because we're here, I don't see that button, to see where that money comes from and how it's all divided up. But absolutely, that would be the number one place I think we need to address.
Thank you. And Mr. Fabian, what do you believe is the single most pressing issue in all of Armstrong County? And if re-elected, how do you plan to rectify this issue? You have two minutes.
I think it'll be the jail, right? There are a lot of pressing issues. But since the two great people that spoke before here and voted for the theme search, of course, we're going to say the jail, right? I don't disagree with them, alright? But a little background, the theme searches have never endorsed any county commissioner, no, in the history of county commissioners. I will tell you this, no other department has had an increase like the jail. It's gone up over 50% since I've been in office. That's been, we've put more dollars into the county jail, one from $3.8 million to $5.7 million. And if you're fortunate enough to get into office, on day one, I have a contract proposal sitting on my desk to increase their wages. Right now, it's sitting on my desk because I can't get a second vote. So we can make that happen after our reorganization meeting. I would gladly put that contract for one of you to sign.
Thank you. And Mr. Farah, what do you believe is the single most pressing issue in all of Armstrong County? And if elected, how do you plan to rectify this issue? You have two minutes.
One of the things I hear again is salary. And again, we're a small county, we're a six-rank county. So we don't receive a lot of money from the state or from federal, as we should be. We need to look into how we can get more money coming this way. We have a congressman who doesn't think we exist, so we never receive any money from up that way. We need to look at how we can increase wages without curbing everything else in Armstrong County. But there's other pressing matters too. Housing is a major issue. We have these huge houses that people live in by themselves and they can't afford to move out and to turn that house over. And then we don't have anybody who can move in who wants those houses. So housing is an issue. We need to try to balance the people that we have in Armstrong County and try to find a way to make it a comparable wage so that everybody can live comfortably.
Thank you.
Let's go.
You may.
Yeah, I always say, Mr. Straight did a great job. You know, I always feel like the Pittsburgh Pirates, I'm a big baseball guy, right? We bordered the LA Dodgers, the Boston Red Sox, the New York Yankees. And it is hard to compete with those other counties. But we only have X amount of dollars right now without impacting the property tax side. And my promise has always been, we're going to put out a fair contract and so what we can afford to be fair to the taxpayer. We've done that for eight years. And again, I'll say it again, I have a contract ready to go for the theme search on day one. I just need another commissioner to sign off on that. That could happen tomorrow, somebody else could sign off.
Mr. Straight, what ideas do you have to improve the quality of education in all of Armstrong County? You have two minutes to respond.
Well, I think the broadband issue is being addressed, it's very important. We folks brought that up in the last debate. I think we need to work on the broadband so that all that information's available to folks. Whether you have issues with a lot of folks that stay at homes, not stay at homes, but that are doing public education. You can't have the opportunity to do at home because you don't have the resources to do it. I think that's one of the most important reasons we need to do it. As for the public education, just continue to support the teachers the best that we can, provide them the tools they need if we have anything missed at all.
Thank you. Mr. Fabian, what ideas do you have to improve the quality of education in all of Armstrong County? You have two minutes to respond.
I would agree with Mr. Straight. I think what the COVID pandemic taught us is actually where our deficiencies are throughout the county. Where we're really weak at as far as connectivity and broadband. Whether people need to work from home, doctors from home, or our students need to work from remote learning. I've laid out a plan to have everybody connected or have access to broadband connectivity by 2028 using the D dollars and the infrastructure dollars the state's rolling out for the broadband and the broadband program. Hopefully we get it. Secondly, mental health. One thing that I'm built proud of, and I spent almost 16 years in the mental health therapist, is when I came into government, one of my goals is to have a mental health therapist in every single one of our schools or at least access to it. I'm proud to say today that every school that we have within our walls, whether the elementary or high school, has that. Our school guides counselors are what they are. They're academic guides counselors. They don't have the time or the knowledge base to deal with the significant mental health issues that we have in our school districts throughout the county. So I think we're making that impact and I'm proud to say we're making a positive impact that way in our educations.
Thank you. Mr. Farah, what ideas do you have to improve the quality of education in all of Armstrong County? You have two minutes to respond.
I said before, education needs to be a priority. Strong education system creates a strong talent base and that brings the investors here. What to do to increase it, you have to remember is education is more than just colleges. Education is also skills. And we need to make sure that we are growing that end of our education also at the vote tech. So that we are creating those type of jobs for linemen to do electrical work or servicemen to be able to do service. So we need to increase all types of education to be a better county.
Thank you. Mr. Shea, what ideas do you have to improve the quality of education in all of Armstrong County? You have two minutes to respond.
Yes, that's a couple of things to do, that's one kind of answer. It's a whole holistic effort. From building our robust pre-teen program, something we've done at each borough, to making sure we have full-day kindergarten, the class size is small enough. And also the 1 through 6 folks, we need to make sure we have small classrooms. But we'll pay for that later. Good broadband is very important. If we don't have that and we don't have that access throughout the districts, there's deficits there. And we're still really having that from the COVID time. There's a big gap. I don't know if we'll ever get it back. I'm sure there'll be a study done someday where COVID is done to the education process. Also, at the higher levels, I'd like to see AP courses and actually, I mean, high school students graduate, but also the associates degree at the same time as possible. AP class and associates degrees at the craze cost. And also, I'd like to see the expansion of lettuces. Work with the prospective employers, find out what they need and tailor the classroom for that. Right now, lettuces, personally, it seems we have to have people away because we have more people wanting to come in than we have spaces for.
BC Three, a community college located in Armstrong County, has not allowed this school to do college and high school opportunities. In what ways would he plan to correct that? You have one minute to respond.
As far as BC Three, I don't know enough about that at the moment.
Thank you.
Mr. Volker, can you repeat that? The question that you asked Mr. Straight about BC Three.
I was, okay. BC Three has not allowed this school to participate in college and high school opportunities. Then in what ways would he plan to correct that? Or in this case, I assume it would be asked of you to correct that.
Well, I started on the advisory board with BC Three. I'll be attending my first meeting later next month, so it's something that I will bring up. Another thing I'm going to bring up is the issue of tuition. And I've never really understood why they have a presence of BC Three in Armstrong County, but we pay out county commission. So that's another thing that I'll be bringing up, but I'll make sure to get back to this part.
Thank you.
Can I add something to that real quick?
Yes, you may.
And I think that they've received the money from Armstrong County, that it needs to go back in negotiations. And that would need to be talked about and not just left. I think we do have some bargaining power on that and I look forward to Mr. Fabian being at that meeting and expressing those concerns.
Thank you. Mr. Straight, given that LBI candidates have given a response to this question, would you care to give a response?
I do not know enough about BC Three and the quality of education.
Thank you. Mr. Fabian, what do you presume to be the most challenging portion of your commissioner career in the event that you were re-elected? You have two minutes to respond.
Can you repeat that? I'm going to repeat it.
What do you presume to be the most challenging aspect of your commissioner career in the event that you were re-elected? You have two minutes to respond.
Well, I think we've done a good job over the past eight years of spending money wisely. I was looking today, we spent over $22 million in the last eight years in capital improvement projects on our campus. And some of that includes parking lots, ice mats, locker rooms, chillers, cookery, HPAC, vehicles, computer systems, storage, server, coding machines, recycling center, equipment, Jordan, jail door system. We've done all these capital improvement projects and we've done all this expansion and infrastructure, sewage, broadband, without getting into the taxpayer's pocket. But we've found ways to do it. And to me, that's the challenging part, but that's a challenge I willingly accept. Finding new grants, finding ways to construct a budget, that not only works for our employees with wage increases and skyrocketing healthcare, but also works for the taxpayer. Finding that balance, we've done it successfully for eight years. I look forward to doing successfully in the next four years.
Thank you. Mr. Farah, what do you presume to be the most challenging portion of your commissioner career in the event that you were elected? You have two minutes to respond.
When I think about being what a commissioner is and what a commissioner should do, I think of it as this. I am not a jack-of-all-trades. The people that we have in those positions, that we have hired, whether they have been elected into those positions, should be the best at those positions. My job as the commissioner is to make sure that they have the money, the resources, and everything they need to do their jobs the best that they can. My most challenging part would be getting them the things that they need to do their best.
Thank you. Mr. Shea, what do you presume to be the most challenging portion of your commissioner career in the event that you were elected? You have two minutes to respond.
For me, I think it'll be dealing with the 24 budget. Going into that, it appears there's probably less than $2 million uncommitted funds in the capital reserve. It looks like each year, the county's been losing about $2 million from the capital reserve. So we're coming to a place where there's not appear to be money. If there's something I'm missing on the budget, I believe that would be a legal issue. Assuming I'm reading the whole frame, the information I got from Mr. Volker.
Thank you. Mr. Straight, what do you presume to be the most challenging portion of your commissioner career in the event that you were elected? You have two minutes to respond.
To be able to come alongside everybody who needs help and provide them all with financial help. I live in one of the poorest townships in the county. They struggle because of the influx of the Amish folks. We don't get the tax money that a lot of the other municipalities get. I have a copy of their budget here. One little issue to replace a cupboard and they're out of money. And that's just one township, that's one municipality, and there are so many of them. So to be able to come alongside and help them all the best that we can, to provide what they need to serve the folks that are in their townships in areas is where my heart's desire is at, is just to find it.
Thank you.
Thank you, candidates, for your answers to all of the questions.
Thank you, candidates, for your answers to all of the questions. We have a rock to the portion of the debate where each candidate will give their closing statement. Candidates will be recognized in reverse valid order and will each be allowed in two minutes. Mr. Straight, you have two minutes.
Tonight, you have sat here, and you've heard all of us talk about our views in Armstrong County. If anyone tonight has read anything about you on my website or my Facebook page, you realize that I'm a man of faith. I truly do believe that God raises us, our people sit in a place of authority. Does that make me somebody special? Absolutely not, not by any stretch. I'm just a common man in a position where those of you that can vote have the opportunity to choose me to help lead this county. Through the course of summer, traveling through the county, I've heard so many great things about the county and so many not-so-great things. You, the voters, will choose three of us standing here tonight. My promise to you is that I will stand alongside the many who choose. We will be a strong team. I stand up here asking you to give me that opportunity and vote for me on November seventh, and allow me to use the talents that I believe, while I'm still in need, to make Armstrong County a better place.
Thank you. Mr. Shae, you have two minutes.
Again, I'd like to thank the students and faculty for hosting tonight's event, as well as the two previous school board debates. Why, like me, is your commission? I've spent my entire life in and of it, from workflows to products to bottom line. I have the ability not to see what is right in front of us right now, but over the horizon as well. I can lead, I can follow, I can have the idea that gets us there, and even more importantly, have emotional intelligence to see that somebody else's idea is better than mine. I am a servant leader. I've always succeeded that way. I serve all those that I lead, not the other way around. I'm not running to make money from this job, trust me, it's all tour engineer manager makes a lot more. But trust it, I will be there every day, day in, day out. I will work, I will take the work ethic I've carried from my time in the military to this job. I do not look at the future with contempt, but rather optimism. Let's not have our descendants look upon us and our time here and say we did nothing. We are better than that. This is our time, everybody. I say we be bold in what we do and expect from Armstrong County. In closing, I've traveled the world, as I mentioned before. I've been to five continents, thirty-five countries, and then I'm allowed to talk about, plus all fifty states. I've been around the world, but there's no better place in Armstrong County to come home to. I will be your leader, whether you are a Democrat, Independent, or Republican. All politics end once the job starts. In the end, we are all just Americans. We all want the same thing, a safe place to raise our families and prosper. I ask for your vote on November seventh. May God bless the good votes of Armstrong County, and may God bless and continue to bless the United States of America. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Farrar, you have two minutes.
Anthony, does that mean you'll actually stand next to me and get a picture taken then?
Absolutely.
Okay. In closing, I would like to thank again Armstrong School District. I think the students have done a fantastic job tonight. I couldn't ask for better. I am so proud that you're from Armstrong School District. We are now just twelve and a half days, or twelve days away from the election. I hope that you, the voters, have taken the time to look at the candidates, and that you have a true picture of the people you're choosing to lead your county. I hope you will choose based on our qualifications and our leadership skills, not just based on party lines. I believe I possess all the attributes needed to lead us into the future. Empathy, vision, persuasion, accountability, as well as team-oriented, and being an effective listener. I am a servant heart. I believe in serving the people. Anytime you are elected and you take a job, you take it to serve, and that's what I will do. The next chapter of Armstrong County starts with you. I'm asking for your vote. Let's write the best story of Armstrong County together. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Fagan, you have two minutes.
Thank you, Shelby. Mr. Cope, Mrs. Clinsmith, Armstrong School District, students, thank you for putting this together. It's important. Remember when I ran in fifteen and nineteen, we had multiple debates in the primary and multiple debates in the general election? And this is important to have all four of us onstage so that the folks can get informed. It shouldn't be an election reduced to a social media campaign, because, you know, anybody can go to a gun bash and serve a burger and go to a fair. The real question that people need to ask themselves, which three of us up here could be the next CEO of the Armstrong County Board of Commissioners? I've done it for eight years. I believe I've done it successfully. I applaud each and every one of you gentlemen for stepping up and throwing your hat in the ring. It's not easy, and it doesn't get any easier. But I truly love going to work and being a full-time commissioner, and making and having a direct impact, not only in Armstrong County, but in the southwest region, northwest region, and even in Ferrisburg. I truly love this work and am passionate about it. I appreciate our county employees. You know, we've done our best to give them salary increases, seven out of the last eight years, even though we have rising costs of forty percent to healthcare. And we've done that, met those challenges without getting into the taxpayer's pocket. My promise is to continue to be fair to the employees of the county and to continue to be fair to the taxpayer. And, you know, at four o'clock today, I got knocked a little bit sideways, you know, said I wasn't communicating emotionally, but, you know, I was made to have a decision tonight. My uncle's dying. My only, my last uncle, a father figure to me, someone that actually stood me from East Borough, went to Shenlock Valley High School, stood at the polls in fifteen and nineteen for me. And I had to make a decision either to be with him or be here tonight. And I know he would want, Joe Fagan would want me to be here tonight, but he's just as passionate about Armstrong County as I am.
Thank you, Mr. Fagan. Your time has expired. We will now transition into a farewell message delivered by Kiefer Woskowski.
On behalf of the AP and GH Government Students, as the end of this anticipated debate draws near, I'd like to express my sincere appreciation to all the candidates for their participation in Armstrong School District's third broadcast debate. I'm proud to announce that our previous two broadcast debates have amassed over one thousand viewers on iTop Sports. The AP and GH Government Students are extremely satisfied with those numbers, along with the positive feedback we received from the candidates and the audience. I would also like to commend the candidates for their unwavering cause for public service, and their courage to stand up and argue for what they believe in, all for the pursuit of a better future for our community. It is individuals like them, with their resolve to lead, who service the bedrock upon which our society's progress is built. Equally, my appreciation extends to the audience, whose active participation has eliminated these series of debates. Your attendance underscores the importance that these issues discussed here tonight bear on our everyday lives. It has truly been an honor to serve as moderator for these debates. Being entrusted with the privilege of hosting an equitable, respectful, and insightful debate is something that I adhere to as a student. With every question posed and every answer given tonight, a thread has been weaved that contributes to a vibrant, vibrant street of democracy. These series of debates have reinforced my belief that the power of informed discourse and the enduring influence of our democratic principles. I'd like to thank my government teachers, Mr. Cope and Mrs. Clinsmith, for making all of this possible. Their dedication to the welfare of our Commonwealth is nothing short of inspiring. Remember, the dialogue expressed tonight ought not to end here. Let the ideas presented in this insightful debate continue to resonate in your thoughts and discussions, as it is through ongoing dialogue and cooperation that will help us create a brighter future for our community. The strength of democracy is dependent on our ability to pose questions, stay involved, and most importantly, exercise our right to vote for the people. As I make my final remarks of our last debate, I stand in front of an audience with one common goal in mind, to make Armstrong County a better place for all of us. With this vision in mind, I implore you to take in the lessons learned in this debate, the ideas expressed, the concerns voiced, and the democracy exemplified, and the different solutions posed for our community. Your role as citizens extends far beyond this school, so I urge you to carry on the civic responsibility into the voting booth with a strong consideration of the integrity and the true determination of these four candidates who seek to represent you. The responsibility of shaping our community's future lies upon your hands. Let it be a future built on compassion, grit, and the true resolution to establish progress. This responsibility will not only pave the way for our county's future, but it will also echo the values and the beliefs that we hold dear. As this debate comes to a conclusion, I recall a quote by former President John F. Kennedy, "Democracy is never a final achievement. It is a call to an untiring effort." Let us take heed of this message and apply it to our involvement in society, and continue to actively participate for the betterment of our county. I would like to thank the Armstrong County Republican and Democratic Committees for their cosponsoring of the streaming broadcast. The candidates, distinguished guests, teachers, and parents, one final time for their commitment to our community's future. Farewell, and let this debate inspire positive change for our county beyond. Thank you.
Evening. Randy Cope, it is my absolute honor to teach our Advanced Placement Government students each and every day. While I appreciate the candidates being here, thank you very much for your time. I appreciate the audience members for coming out this evening. I definitely want to take this time, as our third and final debate closes, to personally recognize the students in the AP class. Emily Pore is here in the audience tonight. Harvey Vol, Shelby Cope, Kiefer Woskowski, and I'm not sure if they've made it back from the parade or not, but Nathan Ferreira, back in the back there, and Wyatt Prunty, there we go, they're here. And Ethan Weigle was unable to be here tonight with another commitment. Ladies and gentlemen, it is an absolute honor, it's not a job, to come here every day, as these students have shown over the last week and a half, and even more so, the passion of the work they've done. It is my honor to be given the opportunity to spend the time with them. Our future is bright because they're all in it. Thank you to everyone, and have a nice evening. Thank you. I can't listen to the crowd, I'm really interested in the students. All the students, the teenagers, the babies, going off on their adventures with the candidates, even with Nathan's Halloween costumes still on.
They sent me information about two drugs. One is, like, just finished up medical trials. They sent me information about two drugs. One is, like, just finished up medical trials. They sent me information about two drugs. One is, like, just finished up medical trials. They sent me information about two drugs. 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 One is like just finished up in medical trials. They sent me information about two different drugs. One is like just finished up in medical trials. They sent me information about two different drugs. One is like just finished up in medical trials. They sent me information about two different drugs. One is like just finished up in medical trials. They sent me information about two different drugs. One is like just finished up in medical trials. They sent me information about two different drugs. One is like just finished up in medical trials. They sent me information about two different drugs. One is like just finished up in medical trials. They sent me information about two different drugs. One is like just finished up in medical trials. They sent me information about two different drugs. One is like just finished up in medical trials. They sent me information about two different drugs. One is like just finished up in medical trials. They sent me information about two different drugs. One is like just finished up in medical trials. They sent me information about two different drugs. One is like just finished up in medical trials. They sent me information about two different drugs. One is like just finished up in medical trials. They sent me information about two different drugs. One is like just finished up in medical trials. They sent me information about two different drugs. One is like just finished up in medical trials. They sent me information about two different drugs. One is like just finished up in medical trials. They sent me information about two different drugs. One is like just finished up in medical trials. They sent me information about two different drugs. One is like just finished up in medical trials. They sent me information about two different drugs. One is like just finished up in medical trials. They sent me information about two different drugs. One is like just finished up in medical trials. They sent me information about two different drugs. One is like just finished up in medical trials. They sent me information about two different drugs. One is like just finished up in medical trials. They sent me information about two different drugs. One is like just finished up in medical trials. They sent me information about two different drugs.